I'd like to call the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five Public Hearing of the Planning Commission through order. The purpose of this meeting is to hear requests for changes in zoning and special procedures. We'll call, please. Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to the Saint Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing requests for changes in zoning and special procedures. I am Keith Taylor, Chair of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce to my right Mel Wilson, Assistant Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to the tonight's petitions. I hope you've had, you have picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guideline brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda lists the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker/attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you wish, if you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agendas. By doing this, you'll be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to County Council. The Commission will not make a decision on every, on every petition heard this evening. Typically, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions of the next executive meeting in September. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting by October sixth of two thousand and twenty-five will be distributed to the Planning Commission in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendation will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or secondhand presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by the other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commissioner or the County Council. Their purpose is to take the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And now, the first petition heard tonight will be PC twenty-eight dash twenty-five UG Commissary LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners. As noted, this is PC twenty-eight dash twenty-five UG Commissary LLC. It's a request for a conditional use permit in the R four for the proposed use of a private not-for-profit clubs and community centers. This is a point zero, or zero-point-three-five acre tract located on the west side of Laramore Road, northwest of the intersection of Laramore Road and Cove Lane. As you can see on the left on the context map, this site is in North County and you will see the parcel itself outlined on the right in red. This is just a larger view of the parcel outlined in red with the intersection of Laramore Road and Cove Lane. This is the land use map showing the surrounding land uses, which is predominantly single-family with a park across Laramore. This is the public hearing sign in front of the parcel. This is looking north down Laramore Road. This is looking south, the opposite way, down Laramore Road. This is the side of the structure looking north. This is the front of the structure looking west, which fronts Laramore Road. This is the back of the structure looking east. This is looking down Cove Lane towards Laramore. And now the petitioner will present.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I am Tashana Parker.
And I'm Kalonda Floyd.
And we do own UG Commissary, however, our nonprofit new avenue is what we are proposing for the old firehouse on Laramore. So one safe space can change everything. Too many of our youth in Saint Louis County face the same challenges. Hours after school with little to no supervision, limited opportunity, and also sometimes they find themselves in environments that are not very safe for them. No direction creates risk, as we know, which is not good. So that's where we come in. We are proposing to create a safe space for our youth to grow, to learn, and to produce into productive community citizens.
Our history and experience, we are of service to our entire community. We like to recognize that this is not our first go-round with helping our community. We are experienced with our seniors, which we have a home healthcare agency and an adult day program in the city of Bridgeton, in which we have been established since two thousand and seventeen with low retention rates, meaning that we truly are about serving our individuals as well as our employees when we help our community. And we look at a holistic approach, not just our youth, but what can we do for their parents? What can we do for the seniors so that the whole household can succeed alone? We are also, this summer, we are proud of partnering with several organizations with Saint Louis County, with the Mental Health Board, Saint Louis Children's Fund, providing safe place fun activities as a tour, serving over three thousand youth this entire summer. We went through the most low poverty-income areas as well as high-risk areas to provide them opportunities that other people may be afraid to go in and do. And it's completely free. We fed them and we gave them nice parties and we're happy to see that kids can have violent-free events with us through the whole summer. We have built strong partnerships, as stated before, and we see how we can also invest in our community with our youth. We employ youth through SLATE and through workforce development. So all of our teams that operate with us are paid through those programs. So not only are they learning how to work together cohesively, they are paid to do what they do and what they love, which is be together, learn gaming, and learn how to be productive citizens in the world.
So our community needs. There is a demand for an after-school program. National and state surveys show that fifty-five percent of after-school programs have waitlists. So we cannot keep up with the demand locally. There is also a need for safety and violence prevention, which we spearheaded this summer. We service over three thousand youth and we did not have a single violent incident. There are income barriers in the county. More than one in four children in Saint Louis County rely on the SNAP Assistance Program, which shows insecurity in food, which we also plan to address in the community center. And then there are housing and financial barriers. More than one in four households in the Saint Louis County are burdened by housing costs, meaning that they pay a high share of their income towards their housing, which leaves little to no income for a paid after-school care.
Why this center matters. We looked at the holistic approach of Spanish Lake. This is my hometown. This is where I grew up and I spent a lot of time here as a child. So to see this firehouse vacant and just sitting with nothing to do for years, it really hurts my heart to see how the, the society, how the community have changed over from when I grew up out in that area. And so therefore, for us, we have to look at what can this do? How can this impact the whole community? How can this impact the economic development? And it all works together. And so for us, eighty-two percent of our Laramore parents, they lack the safe after-school options. So we took the time to talk to Laramore Elementary, to Southeast Middle School, the counselors, the parents, to find out what do you need? What can we do to help? And so for that, when they heard about what we're going to do, we have petition sign. They are rooting for this to be able to have opportunities for their youth to have a safe place to go and also for our seniors to learn computer skills, to learn how to send a resume, to learn how to even respond to SNAP assistance because the correspondence are hard to read or hard to understand. And so we are going to provide a wraparound resource for them. Our proven results from our community centers this summer have shown that seventy-five percent of our youth have improved on grades or job skills across the hundred-and-fifty visits that we have done throughout this entire summer. So we are proud of that. Two thousand and fifty thousand dollars in wages flow back into our community each year. We understand that we are a nonprofit, but we work with other nonprofits that bring in funding to assist with these programs. So when we say free events for three thousand-plus students, we didn't charge anything. So when we build the community, we look at community. How can this help every one of us who are trying to make a difference in the lives of our children as well as their families? And our youth development, we have to look at the future of our, our students, our kids. What are they going to do with their lives? And so that's where we come in as well. We show them individual aspects of job learning skills. Right now, we have a regional art commission grant that we're providing youth empowerment and broadcasting program. We own Gamers Island, which is in Saint Louis County in Ferguson as well. It is a gaming center for our youth to come and say, hey, this is what you love. How can we support you in what you love to do? But let's show you how you can earn job skills and learn job skills in customer service and money management through these programs. And so they do learn all of those things.
So our hours of operation and facility use. Monday through Friday, we will be open from one PM to eight PM, which is after-school and evening programs. On Saturdays, we will be open from ten AM to four PM for family and community workshops. We will be closed on Sundays and major holidays. For the summer, winter, and spring breaks, we will be open from seven-thirty AM until eight PM. And we propose to use the facility for youth programs, which will include tutoring, esports, media arts, and workforce prep. We will also do family workshops. We believe in holistic learning, so parenting, financial literacy, and holistic wellness. Community events, so we would do seasonal activities, monthly safe space events, and resource fairs. And then we will have a flexible space for community meetings and classrooms for our partners and trainings. So for anyone in the community who just needs a space to meet, we will have that open for them as well.
So our own side parking and transportation solutions. So we have vans. We noticed that everyone in that area do not have a car. When we walk them down that strip in, be in the area of Spanish Lake, right in front of the firehouse, we see children walking up and down the street, five years old on up, without any supervision, nowhere to go, parents are not with them. And so we are like, okay, well, we can pick them up. There is ways to do this. We provide transportation currently for our youth and we will continue to do that with our vans as best as we can, even if it's picking up from the schools, which we have those relationships to bring them directly to our center. And we will also be able to take them home in the evening, as we do now, through our other programs that we offer. When we think about parking during the day, most of our seniors, we will provide transportation as we do with our adult day program. So when we look at our parking, limited parking is required for what we're offering during our daytime hours as well as our evening. Most of our kids we want to service are in that area. We want them to feel okay to walk to our location and to know this is a safe place because we are also a licensed safe place. And so we want them to know, come in, drop in. I don't care, you know, what time it is. If you're feeling unsafe, walk to us. We are here for you.
So we actually do have an official safe space in Ferguson. We would love to bring that same thing to Laramore, to the Spanish Lake area. Our staffing that we will have there every day, we will have program managers, specialists, enrollment coordinators, which will ensure that there are smooth daily operations. Our youth programs will have instructors, mentors for tutoring, the gaming program, media arts, and our workshops. We will also have community support. We have so many phone calls from community members right in that area who are already asking, how can we support? What can we do? So we will definitely lean on them for all of our events and activities. And then we will also hire locally. So we will create jobs for that direct neighborhood to strengthen the local workforce. Our safety and security, so we will have trained staff supervision at all times. We already have cameras there. We will produce more and all visitors will sign in and out at every entry point. We will have structured programs, which keep our youth engaged, reducing loitering in idle time. And then we will build law enforcement partnerships, which will provide ongoing safety collaboration and support as well.
As we did our research and partnering with our community partners such as Saint Louis Children's Fund, Mental Health Board, we have the list, STO VP, Violence Prevention. We have really asked questions. We wanted to know, what is it that you are seeing? We also work with our juvenile detention, which is actually in this area as well, to bring these same resources inside of there to prepare them as they exit to have job training and job skills. And so when we were a part of the listening session for the Saint Louis Children's Fund, peer reviews, research, and after-school evaluations show after-school programs reduce risky behaviors and improve academic and social outcomes for at-risk youth. We also had one of our representative, quote, a county representative, we need a safe place after school where our kids can learn, play, and get help with homework right in our own neighborhood. And our own neighborhood is where I grew up and that's why I'm passionate about this location.
Okay, so some of our community partners that we actively work with, SLATE, the Recreation Center in Dalewood, the Violence Prevention Commission, Saint Louis Children's Service Fund, Delmar Main Street. As you can see, the list kind of goes on and on. We have established strong partnerships, so we are able to lean on them and have them to come in and to partner and do all of the things that we need to make this program very, very successful. We partner with other rec centers. We partner with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Urban League, the Wesley House, and we are looking to make more and more partnerships a reality. So here are some visual renderings of the proposed space. The general area where the fire trucks were housed will be our activity area for just general open activities. Then we will have our esports room, where we will show them how to, how to compete across the nation. It's really cool. We will have a community kitchen, where we will serve the community in that surrounding area. And then we also would like to have a library because we do believe in literacy. We do things on a monthly basis with the Ferguson-Floreson School District, where we are also pushing the literacy agenda.
So this is our land survey that just shows where the area is. Of course, the EMT house is right next door as well and we do own that property. So this is the start of just trying to build something great for that entire neighborhood. We wanted to see the area to be, you know, more kept, more, you know, clean, trash. And these are things that we do surrounding our current property in Bridgeton. And we want to continue this in that area just to show that, you know, we can live with better surroundings, better environment, and we don't have to litter. Here's a trash can outside that you can drop your trash in. So these are different things that we're planning to do with our land so people can know this is a place that we want everyone to respect and we also want them to know that you can stop here if you need to at any time.
So our commitment has and will continue to be to create stronger families in the community, to create safer environments for our youth, and just for a healthier community overall. So tonight, you all have the opportunity to make our vision a reality. On behalf of our youth and the families that we serve, we respectfully request your approval on this property and we thank you so much for listening.
I have a, I have a question. You mentioned you own the EMT property next door. What is that?
So right now, it's sitting because we are still in this process. We've been going on almost two years of this, so trying to open up the firehouse. So once we can at least get this going, then we can work on the other side with ideas that we have as well that will help the community in conjunction with all of the other businesses that are surrounding.
What was that? It was like an ambulance district or something?
Yes.
And now it's closed?
Yes.
Anybody else?
I do. Couple few questions. So great presentation.
Thank you.
That was really good, very put together, very polished. I'm proud of North County also, familiar with that area. Recently, we were in a meeting there for a public hearing for the two thousand and fifty comp plan. It smells of gas and all the oil stains on the floor. So that means this is a brownfield site. Are you familiar with that or that term?
Not with the brownfields.
So hazardous materials. So now that's hazardous materials that have to be abated. Like no one should be occupying that building without abatement because of the gas and, and all the fumes, just what had happened in there from the fire department being there. So fire trucks being in there. So that's something you ladies need to investigate. I mean, it's, it's a process.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we're up for the task.
Brownfields, so remember that word. Brownfields, brownfields. And then the parking was so tight, it was nowhere for us to park. We're parking up the street. You can't even park on the street in front of the building because there's no, where to park, no shoulder. I mean, it's just the road and it's the property. And so it was, it was dark around the back and really not a lot of parking there. So I heard you, I mean, I saw you had a, what'd you call it, transportation plan? Solution to, to have vans, but the planning staff, now, I guess we'll have to, you have to look into the parking counts with that and how, whatever this solution is going to be, parking was, was an issue for that site. And so you're turning into a youth center, so workers are going to have to park. Parents are going to come. You're saying community activities, so that's something that I see is really going to have to be investigated also. I mean, I don't know if, and I love the idea of the vans picking up kids, but I don't know if that's all the solution for parking because it is almost non-existent there on that site. And I think that was it, those two things, but great presentation.
Thank you.
How many employees will be there in a normal work week?
Yeah, in a work, well, in a day, we probably will say about five. Max. Maximum there. And most of them, as stated, are like children. They're youth, they're teens, so they're getting dropped off or picked up. We hire between fourteen and eighteen years old, so it's part of our grant programming.
So how many adults will be there?
At least three adults.
So three cars will be on the site.
Yeah, and we've also reached out to area businesses to ask for their support for additional parking, in which they have granted that. We also, we've built these relationships. We've been out talking to them and if someone has to park at Laramore, someone have to park at the park that's a public park and we have no control over that. But also at the middle school, there's areas that we've reached out to and asked, you know, if there is ever an overage or overage or a need, is that possible? And of course, they suggested that there is a beauty shop on the corner. We've spoken to her. She also mentioned, feel free. And so we do have the support there for additional parking. And as we stated, we want them to be able to feel like this is community and they can walk to it down the street as they do now, so.
And because you're worried about security of the children and everything, lighting?
Lighting, oh yeah, definitely.
What is the lighting situation now? Just probably one dusted dawn light that's, that's there?
Yes, but we do plan to add floodlights, whatever lighting that we have to do once we get, you know, approved.
And then I did notice in on your presentation, you talked about the pictures that you had there and then you had a community kitchen. Are you planning on feeding the children there every day or?
So we actually have a commercial kitchen in Bridgeton to where we service the seniors in our adult day program. We service after-school programs. So we just want to be able to bring that same kind of help into that community. So yes, the kids, but we also would like to open it up to the seniors in the area and whoever really has the need.
And we also, yeah, have a meal prep company now that is certified with the state of Missouri for C A C F P healthy, healthy eating. And so we do service our seniors or anyone who want healthy meals in our kitchen currently in Bridgeton. So we do want to continue that.
We've even talked about doing cooking classes and workshops like that within the community too.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, is there any individual that would like to speak for a group in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there any individual that would like to speak for a group in opposition or concern of this petition? Is there any individual that would like to speak in opposition or concern about this petition? If not, I have a hand count on the people that are here in favor of this petition.
I see nine.
Those in opposition? All right. And that is nine for and zero against. And that concludes this petition. Thank you very much. This time, we have PC twenty-nine dash twenty-five Monarch Meadows Retreat LLC.
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC twenty-nine dash twenty-five Monarch Meadows. This is a request for a CUP in the R2 for the purpose of a retreat center with a dormitory is on the track size of a five point six acres located on the south side of North Highway sixty-seven, east of the eastern terminus of T Court. Here on the context map, you'll see it is in far north St. Louis County, and then on the right, you'll see the area marked in red. And then here's the larger area. And then the land use map showing it's predominantly single-family with some large vacant agricultural sites. Here's the public hearing sign at the front of the property alongside Lindberg. Here's facing east down Lindberg at the main entrance. Facing north across Lindberg. Facing west down Lindberg. Then south facing the main entrance of the church. Southeast looking at the vacant residence on the lot. And then south. Southeast as well. And then north. And now the petitioners.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Justine Froker, and this is my husband Chad Froker, and this is Monarch Meadows Retreat. I am a licensed professional counselor by trade turned corporate trainer speaker, and this has been a dream that we've had for about ten years, to be honest, to build a space for leaders and teams and communities to come and gather and do what I call courage work, but corporate training and how to have hard conversations in curious ways, teach empathy, and I just work with teams to help them create cultures of belonging and courage at work. And so this space is really where I want to gather teams and really the community also to reconnect and also be in nature. That's been one of the biggest struggles of finding a space is everything's just drenched with concrete, and so this property is not, as you could see. But this is, our proposed use is for a retreat center with dormitory to, to host trainings and retreats with the occasional overnight guest. So, for example, like my training is right now, three days in a row, and I oftentimes have teams travel in, and they need a place to stay. And so if they could stay in the parsonage house that's on the property together, they don't have to leave and go to a hotel and things like that. We also want to really offer it to corporate teams to do their strategy meetings off-site, get out of the office, be in nature in this beautiful historic building and gather, and then also do private rentals and potential community events. This is a six, almost six-acre property, historic church built in the seventies, nineteen thirties house, twenties house, with all the old details that we want to restore, along with the outdoor labyrinth that they built in, I believe, twenty-twelve. That is in beautiful condition. So my trainings are three days, but I would love to put them into like a five-day training and welcome other practitioners from the area and things like that. But also, I do workshops and one-off series and community events, and then also we would have the leadership teams come in, but also potential for, I just have a lot of community, like other speakers that are always looking for space here in the area, and to be able to have an accessible space for people to rent out, basically. The land is a really big piece for me. We want to clean up the land, it hasn't been taken care of for a while before we purchased the property, so to remove all the dead trees, bring in native plants. The big project would be, there's a pretty big hill on the property that's about point seven acres that we would like to put into a native prairie, because one of the things that I would like to do is partner with the local schools. We, it's a weird, I raise butterflies, so monarchs, and so, and I also volunteer with songbirds, and so to partner with the local schools to educate about just the native plants and things like that, and restore the land, along with the labyrinth, of course. And then the preservation of the historical buildings is really, really important to us, both the church building and the parsonage house, to clean them up, take care of what has not been taken care of for a little while, and restore them to their old glory, basically. There's a rendering of the front of the church, and we added some flowers and cleaned up the trees for you. Well, ChatGPT did, but. And there's the parsonage house, again, replace, just get up all the old trees and then replace with all the native flowers and things like that, but maintain the history of the home. And then that's the picture of the, it's a pretty big hill. ChatGPT did not do awesome on that. It would not look like, it would include grasses and things like that, but we tried a couple times. And there's our site plan. I'll let you talk more about that because it's not mine.
Yeah, so there was quite a bit of deferred maintenance. I think the, the church had kind of fallen on some harder times, and probably over the past five to ten years, things, maintenance really just wasn't done. So that was a big piece of what we have done thus far since acquiring the property in May, was really trying to bring it back to its former glory, and there was all kinds of pictures inside, and we talked to neighbors and like, so excited to be able to jump in and, and help and, and do different things to, to kind of bring it back. So this really is just a rendering of what we wanted to do, the red or trees that would need to be removed because either they're dead or they're leaning over buildings, or they're not native there in the front, which would be replaced with a native tree, but there's no hardscape changes, and we're not proposing any additions to the facilities.
Just, this is who we are. So I, like I said, I'm a licensed professional counselor by trade, so I've been in some capacity of traditional mental health or professional development for twenty-five years. I left my private practice seven years ago to focus on the corporate space, just because we spend more time awake at work than we do at home with the people that we love the most, and so to be able to teach human essential skills in the workplace. So I do a lot of work with education, manufacturing, banking, finance, really just basically any company that's ready to take better care of their people and go back to people first. And then Chad is a fractional CFO.
I'm accountant Chad in the trainings. It is always a joke, but we really have complementary strengths, which works really well in this environment, and kind of a very strong support team for each other. We are definitely rooted in the community, not necessarily this community yet, but it is something that we want to do. We're both from smaller towns outside of St. Louis and currently live in Olivet, volunteer at multiple different places locally, and as she said, we do plan to partner with schools and different people in the near community to utilize the space. And there's some of the things that, that we've done, the roofs needed, replacing the electrical panels, we're all the federal specific, if you've heard that, so tomorrow should be the last one that is getting replaced after, I think about two months now of fabrication in order to, to get it retrofitted. We were relieved of a lot of copper that was around the property from gutters to HVC equipment, so that has pretty much all been replaced now. And then I had mentioned the landscaping, the landscaping was, was definitely overgrown, and with the help of really two neighbors, they came in and helped us really clean that up, and get it looking more presentable, and we're excited to kind of continue that component. That's really what I, I just talked about.
I think the next, the big, the first piece would be when we, when we get approval, would be to look at the sanctuary space and get that updated so that we can start holding community events in there, and so removing pews and, so you just have more flexible seating for different events and things like that. That's really the number one thing, plus the native prairie meadow, because that actually needs to be planted like in December at the latest, but for this year, so.
In this space is about twenty-five hundred square feet that is the current sanctuary. Yeah, and is, really it is very consistent with the historical use of the property, just where a, where a for-profit as opposed to a nonprofit. Open to questions? That is our presentation. Not quite as good as.
I was like, I didn't want to follow you.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. So the patroness house?
Parsonage house.
Parsoness house?
Yeah.
How many bedrooms and baths are in there? Like, what's the plan as far as turning that? Is that gonna be the dormitory?
So that's where people would stay a couple nights if they're there for training, right? Like, so it's right now, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, and we'll add one bedroom. There's a bedroom on the main floor that we want to add, especially for accessibility.
Or convert it back to.
Yeah, convert it back.
Is the plan like to have bunk beds in, in these things, or is it?
I don't plan for bunk, but I don't think teams would want.
So three or four?
Yeah, like, I, there's one bedroom that is definitely a single, then the downstairs bedroom would be most likely a single. There's another bedroom that right now has three twins in it, you could keep three twins, and then there's one room that currently has bunk beds, but we would not be using it for that. It would probably have two to three beds.
And is it gonna be like a massive rehab to make that place?
No, it's actually been, up until about two years ago, it was a functioning retreat center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's great because it's already up to code for everything.
Okay. And is this location on the national historic register thing or?
Not that we know of.
No, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, any questions? Any questions? So when you said it's gonna be open to the community, what are you thinking about?
Partnering, like, I, I definitely want to find some nonprofits in the district to partner with, just to do different programs, offer my programs to them, see if they need to use the space, things like that.
I think more from a rental perspective.
Yeah, and renting, obviously.
For other businesses. It could be a little bit different from a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sorry, what? Yeah. Sorry. I think I saw on your site plan that your engineer or whoever done it had put, like the church use as, for numbers of parking spaces? So it confused me, I thought you were still like having the church operate, and then it was just during the week, you were having something else happening, but you're not intending, there's not a church that's also operating, or is there?
We, we have a tenant right now that uses for services on Sunday mornings.
Okay.
That we're in a month-to-month contract with.
Okay.
So they do use it for Sunday services, and then Thursday night rehearsals and Bible study.
Okay, so you're gonna try, and is that something you're going to keep so that you would have kind of the combination of the two, that you'd still use it for the retreat, but then the church still would lease it out essentially for weekends when you're not?
We are, we're open to it. Right now, both of us were at like thirty days' notice to get out of it. The church, they are out of space, they're growing so much, which is amazing, and so I'm, they're using more of the building than, than we thought they were at first, and so I, I don't know how long it would work for both of us.
Okay.
But we want to make it work as long as possible.
Okay.
Because they are growing so fast, it's amazing.
Thanks, that clarifies. And then just one other really silly thing, the title on the top of the plan had the wrong address. So when I first typed it in.
What was the address?
It was fifty, it was Route something fifty-seven. Instead of saying North Highway sixty-seven, the very, very biggest title on your site plan said fifty-seven.
Oh, as opposed to ten on the end of it?
No, no, yeah. No, no, highway, instead of saying High, North Highway sixty-seven, it said North Highway fifty-seven.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it was right everywhere else, but like, I initially went and tried to type it in to understand where it was on the map, and it took me to the wrong place.
What do we need to do about that?
No, I just, I mean, just, just letting you know if you're using the plans for other things.
Got it, yeah.
That, it, yeah, it has.
I'm like thinking, how many people saw that and missed it?
It was just a strange little odd, and I'm sure it was just because the address itself has fifty-seven-ten.
Yeah.
And then it's Highway sixty-seven, and so fifty-seven went in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
There isn't, so it's like somewhere in, I ca, it took me to like Iowa or something like that on the map, it took me to another state.
And there's a lot of addresses associated with the property, depending on which utility you're with, and they're not always consistent as well, like three different.
Even more.
Amaranth addresses.
Yeah, yeah.
It was an interesting process, just trying to get everything switched over.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time, are there any individuals that would like to speak for a group in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that'd like to speak in opposition or concern for a group for this petition? Is there any individuals that'd like to speak in opposition or concern for this petition? If not, I have a hand count for those that are, would like to approve this in favor. Ten this time?
I see ten.
Ten. Ten? Those in opposition or concerned? Zero, and this concludes this hearing. Thank you. And now we'll have PC thirty-dash twenty-five Layspark Properties LLC.
Good evening, commissioners. As stated, this is PC thirty-dash twenty-five Layspark Properties LLC. The request is for an R2 to M3 zoning change for the proposed use of a nursery and contractor storage yard. The track size is seven point three-nine acres, and the current location is east of Lindberg Boulevard, west of Half Moon Drive, and approximately nine hundred and fifty feet southwest of Midland Boulevard. As you can see here, the property is outlined in red on an aerial, and then we do have a, a map of the entire county showing the area, or where it is located. Here's the aerial in larger outlined in red. And as you'll note, there are two different parcels on the site currently. I do believe they are planning on combining them into one lot. Here is the land use showing the surrounding area. You'll note that there's quite a large bit of multifamily directly abutting the site, as well as some existing commercial across the street, and then industrial to the north Here is the public hearing sign facing west along Half Moon Drive. Here's that same public hearing, or a different public hearing sign, sorry, facing northwest along Link Road. Here is facing the entrance to the site along the north, or direction facing northeast, sorry, is the entrance to the current site. Going into the site still northeast, here's directly looking in from that entrance. Here is the looking west on the site. Here is southwest. Here is east. Across the street to the southeast, here's an existing billboard. This is not located on the property, it's just across the street, and then next to it towards the west is another billboard directly across the street, still not owned by the case today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Frisella Jr. My family is the owner of Frisella Nursery, been around for about seventy-two years in St. Louis for a very long time, actually used to be North County, off of North Lindberg, so this is a kind of a blast from the past going down our old stomping grounds a little So, just, I'm failing comparison with you guys put together, so. So a little bit about our company, so just a little bit of what we do. So we have, right now, we have a thirty-acre garden center out in Defiance, Missouri, out, it's a beautiful country out there, but a lot of our business is in St. Louis County area. Just a little bit of the history about us, just show my aunt, my, my uncle, my grandfather up in the photos up there. There's our tree farm out in Martha's Hill, Missouri. This is our current garden center that we have out in Defiance, to kind of give you a little idea of just some of the things we create when we're trying to think of what we're trying to do to represent our brand well. And what we're wanting to do is do something a little bit. And what we're wanting to do is do something a little bit different, so these are inspiration photos that I've had in a vision folder in my computer for about three years now. And, because I've been looking for a piece of land for a very long time, we came across this land. While it wasn't ideal because of the previous use of it, it did lend itself, after a little bit of research, to allow us to, potentially allow us to do some of the things we want to do. And this is just sort of a sense of the rendering of a building that I want to, that I have in my head, not necessarily this building itself, but something along the same lines, interior of the building. Landscape operations, we are predominantly a landscape contracting company, we're growing, and the garden center used to be a big part of our business, but as things have changed, and the nature of things, contracting has definitely become our number-one thing. And this is an overview of a contracting site that we would like this site to resemble, try to keep it where it's as clean as possible, nice, beautiful landscape, because the current site is, in my opinion, an eyesore, and needs desperate need of remediation when it comes to all the honeysuckle, and a lot of the vegetation that is on the site. And so, there's a lot of good opportunities with it. Similar, there's a speaking in a previous petition about a hillside, this has a massive hillside also along the link side of the property, that lends itself to a beautiful native prairie as well, which I've had in my mind to put in there, because this property not only is an eyesore for the county, but it can be something of showing, a sign of new life, regeneration, especially in this part of the county, I think there's some areas here that could definitely use a little bit of uplift. So some example of some of the retail garden center, the right is one of our more enthusiastic team members, Alex, and the left is another rendering, kind of a concept and an idea of potentially what I would like to do with this place in the future. A lot of what I would like to do with this too is, so I'm, you know, community, everybody talked about community tonight, and I'm sure every petition that comes up here wants to talk about community, try to make it a good ploy to get their petitions passed. But with our, with what we do, and plants, and landscape, it is a community event, so a lot of what we do at our current garden center right now is, we usually have about four, five, six events a month, what I mean by that is, we have classes and seminars. We brought in Ed Plus to do continual education that we do with some different types of educational curriculum that a lot of teachers go through for getting their credits and certifications. We have some pretty fun other events that we get a lot of kids in school, field trips that come out to our place to teach them how to plant a plant, or get involved in some of the different corporations that do offsites here as well, at our current garden center. But ideally, I would like to phase this into a garden center at one point in time, I don't have the money to go all in and do everything, I want to do this at once. But that is the dream, is to make this a destination garden center, but not so much out in the country, something more centrally local to bring a little more vibrancy back to St. Louis County. So this is a, again, a site map, and this is a master plan, this is all-in, and if we were to go in and do everything at once, this kind of gives a little idea. So, that building up front, the smaller square by itself, that is going to, would be basically what I call Phase Two, which is our office building, where we'd have our landscape architecture firm operating inside there, as well as our admin offices. There would even be a small shop bay on the north side of it, just a mechanic shop that we could just take care of some of our equipment. Phase One would be basically the parking on the south side, and the parking in front of that Phase Two building, and that gravel park aggregate storage space to the right of that. There's a, almost a diagonal that cuts that property in half, that would be Phase One and Phase Two. The parking, the street, and the storage is Phase One, the building is Phase Two, and then everything to the right would be Phase Three, with, except for that detention that would go in with Phase One, with a lot of the regrading that would have to happen on that site, because there's a little bit of grading that has to happen out there. This is just another view of it with the neighboring communities and the neighboring sites. A little broader out. So I don't know if anybody here has any questions.
Just a quick question about the right-of-way in that area, is that going to frustrate you that you won't be able to really clean up that whole area of right-of-way that's kind of going to be fronting?
My, so my idea was to talk to the highway department, I think that owns all that, and says, I would like to go in and clean it up, if they'd be open to that. There's a lot of no clearing that they're doing along a lot of the highways, sixty-four and those kind of things right now, especially with all the work that they've got going on. So, I would like to see if I could work with them, I would be, have no problem at my cost, taking, taking care of all that and reseeding, putting vegetation down, preferably near the prairie, until something's done. But it's also a very nasty ravine in that section as well in front, which kind of gives you an idea of what grades used to be there before the previous users had done with the site.
I've got a question, can you go back to the rendering of the site? Anyone?
Okay, yes.
So, where, and I see Sterling Companies did this for you.
Yes.
Where might the entrance be to the site?
So there's a, there's a street, right when you come around North Worsen, right on the right-hand right there, it pulls in, looks like the old entrance that they used to use when they were filling the site. It's going to require a visual easement to the property to the south of that, to do that, and right now, it's just a lot of honeysuckle blocking, obstructing the view in that area.
Is there an entrance from Limburg to Worsen, how do you get around to Worsen?
So you could go, you can take this to Link and down to Midland, or you could take Worsen down to Page. Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, that'd be convenient if we could go right there, but.
So it's just one proposed entrance?
Currently, yes, we spoke about another one on the north side, it was going to take, it was a bit more effort and grading, and this site, for most alternative purposes, is nothing but concrete, brick, old construction fill. And so, we're talking blocks that are in the ground that are twelve foot long, four foot wide, and maybe even five foot tall, there are some massive chunks of concrete in there. And so, the building positions on there, so there was a previous developer looking at the site, they deemed that they could not build on it, what they wanted to do to it. And so, when I got a hold of those plans, looking at them, there's a couple, there's two, where those buildings are, are the only areas that we would have any chance of building anything on that site, and to use the site for what we want to use it for. So that's why they're positioned the way they are, and that's why the buildings are kind of situated how they are as well.
Might have missed, did you have the hours of operation?
So typically, our hours are usually about seven is when our guys start, but a lot of our guys will get there at six, for the construction guys, and they'll go usually seven to five is typical, but with our construction guys, they might be coming, they might be leaving at six-thirty in the morning, they could be getting back tonight, our guys getting back at six-thirty in the evening. So it just depends on the season, depends on where we are, depends on how hot we're running hours also.
What, what type of lighting are you going to have?
So it'd be, it's going to be a mix, yeah, it'd be a mix, so along the, I want to do some really cool landscape berms, so on the, the photo of our current garden center, it's hard to tell, but if you were to go to our website, or Google Maps, our current location, we have this beautiful landscape berm in the front, and I want to do something very similar here. Because our brand, we're a high-end luxury landscaping, architecture firm, and so we have to make sure that what we do, everything our site has to, has to lend to that, because this is where we're going to be bringing clients, this is where we're going to be bringing all of our customers, it was close to the airport, because there's, there's some out-of-town projects that we're working on getting into, so it's just a, it's a perfect fit for us, but it has to be nice, it has to look good. So when it comes to lighting, landscape lighting, there'd be potentially some parking lot lighting, depending on how that would ultimately be, but it would be low-impact lights, because I'm not a fan of broadcasting light anywhere, when it comes to lighting design, it has to be purposeful, it has to be meaningful. At the same time, as you saw in one of those photos, since I bought the property, somebody took the privilege of using it as a dump in the front, so there's going to have to be, you know, some, some security lighting where need be.
Thank you, sir. At this time, is there any, is there an individual that would like to speak for a group in favor? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Speaking in favor? Speaking in favor?
Yes, I just have some questions, I live very close to this area, and.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Kathy Corcoran.
Thank you.
And where do you live?
I live on Morrison Road, pretty close to where this will be, and it's kind of exciting. But my big concern was the entrance, how do you get in there, it's a, it's a curve, it's a blocked curve, and there's a lot of cars, and there's a school nearby, so that's, I'm glad you addressed that. Whenever there's construction, there's always a lot of dust, that's, used to be a, was filled, was filled in, so dust is a big concern for me when they are doing a lot of work, and the trucks are coming in and out. The plan showed like a fuel station, which is close, where the proposal shows it's kind of close to Worsen, I don't know if that's like above ground, if that's in-ground, if it's electric, I don't know, you know, it was just a question I thought about. And that's it, I mean, it'd be good, I can see that as a bonus to the area now, but I've never been to one of these before, so I just thought I'd bring my concern. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, is there, like, to speak in favor or opposition or concern?
My name is Dennis Borgman, and I'm representing the Worsen Ridge Condominium Association, which is right next door to this property here, and it's been kind of ignored in all the presentation here. We have forty-five units, and it was built in nineteen eighty-eight, and we have some serious concerns about the safety regarding the entrance there, if there is nothing, if there are, if there's nothing to be done about the signage or signs or whatever. Because I don't, I'm not able to reach up there and show you what the situation is, but the situation is that we are right next, we are the, the map there where the white, the bottom white area is, on the left side by Worsen Road. Well, we are the development, that's just this side of it, or would say it's actually west of, or east of the, of the development. I personally have no objection to a nursery there, I'm a, I'm a former owner of a florist here in Clayton, and I think it would be a nice facility. The problem is, the entrance is right at the beginning of the curve, and that curve is like almost an eighty-degree curve. And Worsen goes straight down here, and there's, when we, when we come out of our development, we have three choices to make. We can go right across the street on Crackey Road, and it goes down, all the way down to Page. Or we can turn right on Worsen, or we can turn left on Worsen. And so, we have to, when we come out, we have to be sure that nothing's coming from, from the west, and nothing's coming from the east. So, it's, it's a very precarious situation, now the woman that was just here, she lives right across the street from us, and she's, she's a little further down, she's almost near where they're going to have the entrance. But anyway, the concerns, the safety concerns, or that turn there, the cars come up Worsen, and they zoom up, and so, if, if we have, if you're turning right onto Worsen, on Worsen from our place, then you have to have a line of sight. Now, if there's a two, if there's a truck or two cars that are ready to make a right there into their property, our line of sight is hurt, and we can't see if a car is coming this way. Now, the other thing is, then, just the opposite, is if cars are coming up the hill and turning in, and they have to stop to enter, that could cause a problem from that traffic, as well as the traffic going this way. And so, it, to us, we see it as, as a, as a traffic hazard, as a danger. And just, just a year ago, on September the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, there was a car leaving Crackey Road, going from, from, from Page had come up, and it was going to, and he made a left. And when he did, a car was coming from, from Worsen, well, it's actually Link Road, Worsen turns into Link Road, and when it gets up to that corner, it becomes Link, it's not really a corner, the curve. And so, it was coming this way, and he was going that way, and they hit, and, and the cars hit, and I've got pictures here, the car ended up running into our building, one of our buildings. And so, we already have a hazard there from one direction, and this would be two more directions. Like I say, we have no objections to the facility that would be there, but the entrance there is going to be very dangerous, and that is our main concern. The other thing is, it's not been told, I don't think, but the developers have to, have to acquire from Worsen Ridge a line of sight right away.
Mr. Chair, that's five minutes.
Pardon?
Could you wrap it up real quick, because I think we might have another couple speakers?
And that's our other, and that's our other concern, are we going to cooperate with that right-of-way acquisition if we, if we think it's a very dangerous situation that can't be remedied? Okay?
We'll have the presenter come back up and address your questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
He wrote, yeah, he wrote opposed, undecided here, wrote his concerns, yeah.
All right, are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, presenter would like to come up and address those questions, the gentleman here.
So a couple, a couple of concerns, first, the woman who spoke of asking about fuel tanks up there, so we would have on-site fuel storage for our equipment there, and it would all be in an EPA-regulated bin all above ground, because of the contents in the ground, I can't do too much in there. But the bigger, the bigger concern, to the gentleman's point, is, is the safety, I've been there many times now, I understand the concern. A lot of, in my opinion, a lot of what is obstructing the view is all the vegetation, again, from the MODOT property, and also on the Worsen, Worsen side of, on the property line there, with all the, all the honeysuckle vegetation that's blocking a lot of the view, and yes, I mean, we require a, us working with them on an easement, visual easement to get that in there. This doesn't show. I thought I, we had. No, it's not up, it's not up there. Actually, there's a, the way the property works, so there's a, you can kind of see, it kicks, it kicks back there. And so, where that kickback is, so if you go down, if you're going up North, North Worsen Road, it kicks back, so the property that we have comes up to North Worsen, but it kicks back, and that's right where that drive is at. And so, when we were looking, with Sterling us, we were looking at all the, and how this would have to go with the site easements, and we, on our own property, we have to keep everything way up off the site, so we're not going to be able to have berms per se, but turf and some things nicer, and the neighborhood landscape would be back beyond the visual easement. So it's, it was definitely addressed a few weeks, a few weeks ago, a couple months ago, when we went through the planning phase and what we were going to have to have, have for this. The only biggest obstructions that would be there, if we were able to work with them and open up that visual easement, is the telephone poles, utility poles that are there. Yeah, so, and they just, they start putting new poles in there also, so.
Was there a possibility of a small turn lane to come in? Was there a possibility of a small turn lane to come in?
That was, was that, was that brought up? I thought that was, it was discussed at one point in time.
Which I think we're talking about, you know, you're going to have a lot of trucks coming in.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. And the, in the, yeah, between, between four and six, trucks will be rolling in. And to get going, I think we had 15 trucks is what we're planning on to start with out there. But a turn, a turn lane, I don't think would be out of the question on that. I mean, if that would alleviate things.
I think we're, what they're talking about is, what he was, the gentleman was talking about.
Yeah, if you're parked, you can't see them, yep, yep, yeah. Yeah, I, I completely, so where I live on Double D out, out there, I have a blind hill that my family and kids have to pull out on every day, so I, I understand the concern.
Thank you very much. Good answer. Okay. At this time, can I see a show of hands of those in favor of this petition? Eight, nine?
Two, nine.
Nine. Those opposed?
See one.
We have one. Okay. Thank you very much, and that concludes this hearing. Entertain a motion for adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. What do we got, two, four, seven, zero?
You want to re-adjourn in on?
I will.
After a four break?
Yeah, take about a five-minute break. Okay? Thank you very much. Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it, seven, zero. And next, we have a letter of recommendation for PC 25-25 Midhat Slumovic.
Well, again, commission, as stated, this is PC 25-25. The petitioner is Midhat Slumovic. The request is for an amended C8 to allow for an indoor recreation complex. The tract size is 3.78 acres, and the location is northwest of Lee May Ferry Road, southeast of Interstate 55, and approximately 150 feet north of Longview Drive. As noted, here is the site outlined in red in an aerial, and then you can see it, its location in the county there on the other map. We are bringing this letter of recommendation, which is consistent with the commission's action of the previous executive meeting with the requested revision to signage in our recommending approval. Recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department. Is there?
Well, since this is, the commission already took their action on this, this would just be voting to forward or not, yeah.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have that. Thank you.
Thanks.
And now we have the correspondent, PC 85-78 John V. Nguyen DDS.
As noted, this is PC 85-78 John V. Nguyen DDS. It's coming to you as a correspondence item for a request to amend a C8 for the proposed use of an e-commerce or delivery-only retail facility on a 2.4-acre tract located in the northern quadrant of the intersection of Tesson Ferry Road and Concord School Road. As you can see on the left, this site is in South County, and you can see it outlined in red on the right. This is the larger aerial view showing Tesson Ferry Road to the right. So for a little bit of context, this originally, PC 85-78 was originally a request for a change of zoning from R2 to C8 to allow an, a dental office complex. There has been three C8 amendments since that time, two concerning signage, and most recently in 2022, to allow general offices in addition to the dental office use. The current request is to amend the ordinance to now allow an e-commerce or delivery-only retail facility on the subject property. The site currently contains a multi-tenant office building, including the dental office. And the, the company that is making the request sells medical, like medical lab equipment that they sell to hospitals or clinics. But the applicant states there will be no physical customer sales on the premises. The product is also not made there, and there are already daily deliveries that are made to the variety of businesses there. We do recommend approval for this request. The proposed use is similar in nature to the surrounding office and dental office uses, and it would not increase intensity of the traffic at the site.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by?
May I ask a question? Could you go back one slide? And before that? So it's a request for change of zoning from R2 to C8?
No, so that was the original piece, when this came before the board in 1978, the original PC 85-78 was for the change in zoning to the C8, and now this is an amendment to that C8.
Which is, it's still going to be a dental office, but it's also going to be a pickup spot for medical equipment deliveries?
Yes, so it's a little bit hard to see, but there are like four...
I'm familiar with the...
Yeah, the four distinct buildings there, it's just a multi-office space. And because, as the petitioner stated, there are already daily, like FedEx, UPS deliveries made there, that there would already, the use is already, like, it's already made for it to be there. The trucks are already there every day.
And it wouldn't be at the dental office, it would be a different office?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that it's like a series of office suites make up the building.
I see that. Okay, yeah, thank you.
I got my braces here.
Oh.
My eye doctor's next door. It's a South County thing.
Yeah.
Can I ask you another question, too? And I didn't get to look as closely at the property. The letter that they had has the square footage, and it says property is 3,456 total. But then the recommendation is it's not to exceed 10,000 square feet. Is there 10,000 square feet of office space on this property?
I, let, let me look at the map real quick. I think when this was originally developed, I think the parcel to the north was part of it as well. So I think that's a remnant regulation for, for when it would have been an overall larger development. That just still remains in the conditions of development.
Okay. I just wonder if you would keep it at 10,000 square feet if... I guess if they were gonna, they'd still then be able to redevelop more in the future if they wanted to. But yeah, it just seemed like a really, a much greater number based on when their, their letter was saying that the property is 3,456 square feet total.
Yeah, I think it does look like the petition to the north is, was superseded, this having been a part of the larger development. But as it reads right now, in theory, it would permit a building expansion. So if it's the will of the commission to tie, to bring that overall development square footage that's permitted to match what's there, I think that would be totally appropriate. So we could certainly, it wouldn't impact this petitioner at all. We can certainly make that change to sort of right-size the, the regulations to fit what's there now. And if the, if that's the will of the commission, we would just make that change in the, in this item and still send it along. But I think that would be, an amendment to the motion would probably be appropriate. If you're interested.
Oh, I, I guess I'd ask the other commissioners whether they're interested. I mean, it, it's not that big of a deal, and in the future, if someone wanted to tear the buildings down and rebuild and had the ability to fit a 10,000, I don't want to prohibit them in the future from doing that.
They'd be able to put a 10,000 feet build on this particular piece of property.
Depends on how high they go. I mean, they could go higher, so I mean, I...
Then they wouldn't have enough room for the parking lot, I believe.
That's, yeah, that's...
Unless they put a parking garage underneath.
There are, there is some interplay of, like, probably the setbacks as well. A lot of things that they probably have to amend to get the most out of that ultimately. And any change like that would obviously require site development review by the staff, and then would come back to the commission. But I think that, either way, is, is not inappropriate.
Okay. So I mean, I, I remember, I'm going to try to remember this correctly. Whoever made the initial motion?
Anyone can make a, a motion to amend.
Okay. So I would make a motion to amend the use permitted to not exceed and have staff do a square footage that matches more closely what's currently on the site.
Did we just say the, the square footage, what they posted that they had?
Yeah.
Which was what? How much was that square footage?
3,400 and...
We'd probably round up to 3,500.
Yeah.
3,500 square feet.
So does this restrict them in any way?
It does.
No, since it's already, it doesn't reach that size. Unless there is some new development plan that emerges that involves a larger building, making this change, would it impact any of the current tenants? But then that motion to amend would need a second.
You've heard a motion for amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. So, and now we have a first and a second.
So now you would need to vote as a body to approve that amendment. And then if it were adopted, then you would vote on that new motion. So first, the commission needs to vote whether or not to accept that, that amendment.
We had a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, seven, zero. And now we're going to...
Now the, now you can vote to, right?
Approve the recommendation of the department. And we had a first and a second on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have that.
This is great practice.
And now, we have a correspondence. PC 40-19 William J. Sislinski.
I'm always clicking the wrong way. PC 40-19 William J. Sislinski was a conditional use permit in the R5 to develop a parking lot on a 0.31-acre tract located on the southwest side of Betty Jean Lane, approximately 130 feet southeast of Telegraph Road. And tonight, we're bringing to you a request for a termination of that conditional use permit. This site is located in South County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. So for background, the request was for a conditional use permit in the R5 Residence District to permit a parking lot to be used as parking for the adjacent restaurant that fronts on Telegraph Road. Conditional use permit number 977 was effective on November 10th, 2021, after the commission granted approval. The site development plan was then approved on May 9th of 2023. In the conditions of the CUP, it requires that substantial construction be complete within two years of the effective date of the conditional use permit, which would have been November 10th, 2023. And the property owner did not complete substantial construction, nor did they request the Planning Commission extend that deadline. In fact, they have reached out stating that they're no longer pursuing this project, and they have been working with the Department of Transportation and Public Works to get a land disturbance... a land disturbance permit to restore the site to its previous condition. Currently, there's some gravel on the site that needs to be remediated. So that's, that's where we are with this site. So the department is recommending repeal of this conditional use permit, which would prohibit anyone from developing a parking lot on this site and would just revert it back to the R5 Residence District solely. So any of those permitted uses could be developed by right. If anyone wanted to either build this parking lot or develop any of the other conditional uses in the R5, they would need to come back to the Planning Commission for a new public hearing.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions in regards to this?
When it gets removed, do you, I know they wanted an escrow back. Do they get their escrow back after they've dealt with their violations?
No. The deposit agreement is, is crystal clear that if the improvements aren't made, the funds are forfeited.
There you go.
All right. Well, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it, seven, zero. And next, we have correspondence from 26-27, 25 McBride Land Growth LLC.
This was a request for a change of zoning from R1 and R2 Residence to, to R2 Residence District and a request for a PEU in the R2 Residence District to develop single-family residences on a 13.9 acre tract located on the east side of Dietrich Road and north of the eastern terminus of Dietrich Glen Drive. The commission will recall this site is in sort of like mid-county and there it is outlined in red on the aerial. The petitioner has reached out indicating a request to withdraw this petition due to some excessive grading and rock issues on the site. And the department is recommending withdrawal without prejudice.
You've heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. And there's been a second. Is there any questions? Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. And I believe that's it.
That's all we got.
I believe that's it. I think we're due for just a regular October executive meeting on the 6th. Does that sound right, Abby? Then it, they're nodding, so. Little bit of a break. Feels, uh, virtual, back to virtual since it's just an executive meeting. Correct.
Hey. Entertaining a motion for approval, I mean, approval adjournment, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. And we're adjourned until October 6th and virtual meeting.
Virtual meeting. 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM. Okay.
Thank you all.